All right, I got nine o'clock, nine o'clock. Excuse me. All right, it's nine o'clock, it's time to call this meeting to order. Good morning, glad to see a lot of people here today. I hope this meeting goes well and we can get a lot accomplished this morning. Let's start right into it. We have items. Oh. We have items for commission action. Item A, gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the appropriations, any questions concerning those?
No.
No, I didn't have any either. You've all had a chance to read the minutes from September the 12th.
Each item, each item, we have to move on it.
Okay, okay. So, on item A, then I make a motion that we approve the appropriations as stated. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consider approving the minutes of the September 12th, 2019 city commission meeting, we've all had a chance to look at those, any questions about those?
No.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve. The minutes of September 12th, 2019 city commission meeting, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item C, consider a request from Susan Scoville to rename the Memorial Hall Auditorium after Independence native and Niwala revivalist Jim Halsey to be called the Halsey Performing Arts Center. Susan, how are you this morning?
Well, I'm doing okay. It's, I received a phone call that I need to amend the request in the following way. That the auditorium be named in honor of Jim Halsey, called the Jim Halsey Auditorium. And I received that request this morning, and I can explain later, but anyway. I don't know when I've been this nervous, but for the record, my name is Susan Scoville, Independence is my hometown, and thank you for the opportunity to address all of you during the time you're performing the people's business. For me, there's something especially poignant about an old lion like my father when he starts getting sentimental. But my dad's always been very emotional about the gold standard success story, that's Jim Halsey. They're both members of the class of 1948, and this is their 89th year of life. And so I'm asking you at this time to make, to name the auditorium. The history of Independence would be incomplete without a sizable chapter written about Jim, and there's plenty that's already been written and said. But I do have a little story that you may not have heard. Jim, it may have been one of his first promotional efforts, he organized the Junior Marines here in Independence at the age of 12, soon after the war began for the United States. And when he organized the Junior Marines, he contacted a local recruiter and arranged for the little 12-year-old boys to meet on Washington School Playground and do rifle drills with their BB guns and practice marching and following orders. And then he led the boys downtown in a parade to sell war bonds. He later served in the Marine Reserves himself, and my dad recalls receiving a little special treatment during the Korean War years because my dad knew all the drills, knew all the marching, and I don't know if that bought him a chicken leg or what it got him, but he says he got some extra perks. But I received a message from one of our veterans here. I went to the VFW Post 1186, and during their Friday Bean Feed, they agreed to support this effort, and I have a letter to that effect. But I also received a message, and I'm not going to name the gentleman unless, you know, I get his full permission, I haven't been able to reach him. But he sent me this, he says, "My personal thoughts are that Jim Halsey and the entertainers that he represents are true patriots. I'd hate to think about the state of disrepair the Memorial Hall would be in if he wasn't responsible for the entertainers that had performed there. All veterans whose names are on the honor rolls up there should be proud of him for this. We should have a dedication ceremony. I think that Jim Halsey Auditorium makes sense in the fact that it will guarantee that Memorial Hall will be there long after we're dead. Fundraising can be a lot less stressful to the taxpayers if we just agree to rename it. I personally listened to many of his entertainers during my tours around the globe, it always reminded me of home, and so does Jim Halsey." When I think of Memorial Hall, I will always think of Jim Halsey. It would be an easy question to answer. We wholeheartedly support and humbly request that you make this possible for Jim. The letter I received from Commander Ryan York says, "The VFW supports and requests that the auditorium at Memorial Hall be named in honor of Jim Halsey."
All right, Susan, thank you.
And I have the letter sent.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for Susan?
Not right now.
Okay. I have a request, Glenna Lawrence, that you would like to speak to the commission, please come up front, up here to the podium, yes, please. Thank you, Susan. Glenna, how are you this morning?
I'm great, and I'm kind of like Susan, I'm a little nervous.
Oh, nothing to be nervous about.
I've taught school for 50 years, and it's different looking at you people. I'm Glenna Lawrence.
Would it help if you just thought of us as old students that have been left behind?
Seven and eight-year-olds, I can do it, I can do it, okay. In fact, I've probably had a couple of you in school. I'm Glenna Lawrence, and I've lived here all my life, and I guess I'm supposed to request, may I use Susie, Mr. Clafish, and Mr. Hogsett before I introduce myself. Memorial Hall and the rooms within its walls were intended to honor our veterans who fought and died for our freedom. To rename any part of this building, I believe, would be disrespectful to our veterans past and present in the military. I mean no disrespect toward Mr. Halsey, but the name Memorial Hall and the rooms within Memorial Hall, I believe, should be named in such a way as to honor those who fought and died while serving our country, just as it was intended to be. And that is from Kathy Shepherd. I have known the Halsey family forever, I did have their children in school, so I just would like to recommend that maybe you table this, so maybe more people and the citizens of Independence will be aware that what's wanting to be presented. And if maybe we could even have a committee to do a little research on this, just so the citizens. I have a question of why we, I just heard about this this past week, and I'm married to a retired military person, and I think he feels as I do that maybe we're rushing into this. So if the commissioners could consider having a study group, or, and I would be glad to serve on that committee, for the possible change for this building.
All right, Glenna, thank you very much for speaking. Okay. Gentlemen. I looked at this myself, the building itself was built after World War I to recognize the sacrifices of the veterans. It was used to, as a facility that would honor them. It included an auditorium that has been used to put on a lot of, not only civic programs, but other programs throughout the years. And there's lots of other cities throughout the country that have, that have built memorials of this part. I understand both sides of this. For some, you know, it will be Memorial Hall and everything involved in it is related to veterans. You see the list of service members that have served throughout all the wars, and it's prominent in the lobby, you know, this facility here is the veterans' room. The facility out there is called the Civic Center, but it's all tied to the veterans that have served during that time period, and it's an honor to those that continue to serve. We still have wars, and there are still plaques being added to the facility. And I understand the other side, because Jim Halsey was such an important part, not only to the community, but brought many events into the auditorium for the benefit of the community, and some of those have been patriotic events. We've had events in there where we've, we've had a send-off for the 10/11th, when they were deployed to Iraq. We've had various groups and performers come in, so I, I kind of see that. So I'm seeing both sides of the coin. So that's, that's my take on this. I think the reason why. I understand your point for maybe wanting to continue to get more input on this. I know you've already, Susan, you've already talked to the VFW and, and the American Legion, and they didn't have any qualms about this. Yes, sure, step forward again, please.
I am very humbled by what she said, and I will explain my haste in this. Mr. Halsey is 89, and the reason for the push, which seems a little strong and a little fast, is because there's going to be an event in the auditorium on November 30th, when Mr. Halsey brings the Oak Ridge Boys to town. And everybody that he loves will be gathered together along with the Oaks, and it seemed like a good and convenient time to bestow this honor on Jim. It was my understanding that the, two of the veterans that I spoke with said that they consider the auditorium to be the public portion, and that that surrounds it is sacred. And adding the name Jim Halsey Auditorium is in recognition of his contribution to maintaining Memorial Hall during a point when it was in disrepair. And he's an extremely patriotic gentleman, and I don't think that takes away from Memorial Hall itself, but I have deep respect and will abide by whatever decision is made. For me, it was just a matter of running out of time, and, but I understand completely. Thank you.
Sure. All right, thank you, Susan. Gentlemen, any comments from either one?
Well, I agree that we need to preserve the original integrity of the building as Memorial Hall honoring the veterans, and at that time, looking that the war was considered the Great War, the war to end all wars, and we find out that that judgment was wrong. But it is important, and I think significant, that our town does have this facility to honor the veterans, and in no way do, I want to see that taken away from them. I think the change of the name, I was concerned with the original title as identifying it as Performing Arts Center. I think that name transcended more than the auditorium, but it did give a appearance of encompassing the whole building. The auditorium, changing it to Jim Halsey Auditorium, or, you know, even the Halsey Auditorium, which would include both Jim and Sherman, is a different, different story. I can, see, I understand both, both sides of thought. I think you look at the history, the contribution that the Halseys have made to the music industry and being local, and their emphasis on independence, and what they've contributed is something that is important that we recognize. And also, the timing that, a lot of times, memorials to people are done after they've died, and I'm always wondering.
Why?
You know, why aren't we telling them while they're alive that we feel they're significant? You know, after, after we're gone, you know. Doesn't make a difference, we don't, we don't know all the nice things that people might say about us when we're gone, it's while we're living, we need that recognition. So, you know, I'm sensitive to what the veterans say and how they feel, and recognizing too the need, or the importance that we honor our, our citizens for their accomplishment too. So, the auditorium, defining it to a specific area, I think a little more appropriate definitely than a performing arts center.
Gary, comments?
These kind of issues are so tricky, since I only moved to town six years ago, and six years ago, I'd never heard of Jim Halsey, I've certainly heard lots about him since. I've also never been given an opportunity to name an auditorium after somebody, so it fills like a lot of responsibility, and Glenna Lawrence is one of my favorite people in the entire world, although Susan's fastworking her way up that list also. So, you know, I, I've never met Jim, I know of his accomplishments, I think I'll just defer to whatever you gentlemen think, I really, I, I don't know the right answer to this question.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Assuming you two agree, and if not, then I have to.
Right. Now, that's a thought.
Yeah.
The facility will still be known as Memorial Hall. That, that part will never change. The plaques, the dedication, everything that's part of that building will still remain intact, and it'll still be in honor of the veterans. Hopefully, we won't be adding any more plaques of another war down the road of young men that serve and young men that die. So that part will never change, everything that's in this building is named for a specific reason. The auditorium, I think, was, was meant to be something that would be a part of the community that the community could use, not only for patriotic events, Jim Halsey was a military man. But you look at, if we hadn't had that effort with Jim, bringing all these, bringing all these programs into the, into the facility, I don't know what the condition of Memorial Hall would have been, if it would have been something that we would have built, and over time, it would have just been rarely used, and the facility would itself would have downgraded because there just wasn't a need for it. We didn't, we didn't, rarely had, had an event in it. So, in one hand, they kind of, they kind of go together when you think of Memorial Hall. When you think of events, you think of Jim Halsey, and the tying is there. I don't think it does a dishonor by taking the auditorium and just saying the Jim Halsey Auditorium, because I think that was meant for the community, the entire community, to use and to have. And that was, that was, and that was, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I think that was what the veterans would, wanted this, this part of the building to be, something that could be shared and used by the entire community, and that everything else will stay intact. So that's my thinking on it. I'm, I'm more inclined to think that, I don't think this disrespects the veterans. I think everything stays intact as far as what, what, what it means to the community and what it means to the veterans. So, unless you gentlemen have any more comments, I'm going to.
Well, along the same line originally, I think it was brought to a vote for a bond to provide a place to honor the, the veterans and also serve the community. You know, I think we could argue both sides, and both sides be, be right. A memorial that doesn't bring people in has no, no effect. You know, and it's, it's surprising that how, if we don't have that concept, pretty soon, everything is lost. I remember the time the white crosses were on the corner every Memorial Day. Don't know what they were for, I drove by and I saw them, I remembered that they were there, but, but, you know, recognizing that it was in some honor, but what did each cross represent or anything, I never stopped to look at it. And I think one of the things, when we started discussing Veterans Freedom Square, that it had to have a purpose and a story to bring people through it, to bring them there. And a memorial that doesn't bring people through soon becomes ineffective. One of the things that the events of having the Memorial Hall that we, as we do with the auditorium and the Civic Center, people come in, and with the lobby with the names, they're exposed to the names. And I remember one Saturday, we took a road trip with friends on motorcycles and went to see the USS Batfish. And above, you know, we went through the submarine, went to the museum, but then there was a patio that overlooked the boat, and there were markers, and when I started reading them, I started seeing names. And it had a boat name and the name of the crew that represented those that had perished. And it changed, when you see a name, that event changes. And the same when you stand before the Spanish-American War sign, or the World War I, the World War II, the Vietnam, and you start seeing names. What we studied in school, history changes, and it only happens when you stand before it and look at it, and one of the ways that happens is coming to Memorial Hall for an event. And I guess it's a long story to say, I can see that without someone bringing music and talent and shows here, that exposure to the Memorial Hall would have been limited. And the quality of acts and the names that have come to Independence have basically been by his effort and Sherman's effort in the business and their love for independence. So, you know, I guess I would say I would be supportive of, of naming the, the auditorium, either, you know, Jim Halsey Auditorium or Halsey Auditorium.
Okay. All right, then, I'm gonna make a motion, I will have to amend this, but I'm gonna make a motion that we move to approve the request and rename the auditorium from the Memorial Hall Auditorium to the Jim Halsey Auditorium. Gentlemen, that sound right to you? All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Glenna, Susan, thank you very much. Sure, please step forward.
I appreciate what you've done, and I hope that the public is kind to you for taking this stance. Commissioned a piece of art from Jim Hayward that will be presented to Mr. Halsey. And as I said, we hope to do that during the ceremony when the Oak Ridge Boys are here. And just thank you again, I appreciate this.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, thank you very much. Thank you, Glenna, for coming up and speaking also. All right. Yeah, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess, and then we'll come back and we'll set up to have a joint discussion with the Economic Development Advisory Board. So, 10-minute recess, and then we'll, we'll reconvene again.
At 9:35.
9:35. Okay. All right, I want to welcome everyone, ex officio, and on those that have stepped up to serve on this economic advisory board, I'm glad you're all here this morning. I don't, I'm sure you're familiar with all three of us gentlemen here, but, but let's just all introduce each other in case someone's a little fuzzy about who's who and why they're here. So, my name is Louis C. Sussi, I'm serving my second year on the Independence City Commission, and I have, my background is not economic development. I worked for West Star Energy for 37 and a half years, so I'm more of a, of a field, and I managed other people at times that worked under my, under my leadership. But this is what, this is what I bring as far as to the committee, some of you are well-versed in economic development, and that's why you're sitting here. But that's who I am, and let's go, let's go here, and we'll just come all the way around. Gary, I'm sure everybody knows you, but go ahead.
Gary Hogsett, City Commissioner, for two more meetings until Dean Hayes takes my seat, first of January.
Lori.
Lori Kelly with Equity Bank, Advisory Board member, and I've been with Equity Bank or the bank for almost 31 years.
I'm Jim Correll, I've done a lot of different things, but for the last 13 years, I've been at the college, developing the entrepreneurship program, and in the last five years, running the Fab Lab, and I would say that we're trying, I'm interested in building an entrepreneurial ecosystem as part of our economic development efforts.
I'm Paul Yurloski, I'm recently retired from Dodge City Community College after 25 years in Dodge City and moved here, my wife teaches out at the community college here. And, yeah, in Dodge, one of the things that I was actively involved in, they had a "Why Not Dodge?" program, which we use, similar to what we're looking at here with the economic development, that's what sparked my interest in the community, and I've been very welcomed here, so.
My name's Tony Royce, and I was the Finance Director for the city for 28 years, retiring in June of 2015.
I'm Tricia Purdon, I'm your countywide economic development director. So I, the city of Independence contributes to my organization, so I service the city of Independence. So we do business recruitment, business retention, small business development, entrepreneurship, and then also, we assist on quality of life initiatives like talent, workforce, and housing projects.
I'm Lisa Wilson, I'm the President of the Chamber of Commerce, and I've worked for the Chamber for eight and a half years, and we are obviously very interested in economic development, so I appreciate you allowing me to serve as ex officio.
Good morning, my name is Jason Curtis, currently working for Parham Incorporated here in town. We have a donut shop that most of you are aware of, convenience store, liquor store, we have a couple of more donut shops in Owasso, Oklahoma. Just want to see this town grow, want to do what I can to be, to make the town successful.
Good morning. I'm Wayne Stefany, and I'm retired from John Deere, I moved here about 30 years ago to work at Western Publishing Company, and I, like I said, I'm retired, I have time, and I have energy and an interest in the success of this community.
My name is Chuck Goad, I'm the President of Commercial Bank in Independence. I serve on several economic development organizations, boards, Independence Industries, Independent Action Partnership, I serve on the board and Executive Committee of MAC. I've been on some regional economic development entities in the past, but don't currently serve on any.
Tabitha Snodgrass, Executive Director of Independence Main Street.
Tabitha Snodgrass, Executive Director of Independence Main Street. And I have started my third year in September and obviously I just want us to have a beautiful downtown with lots of retail and service. Thank you.
I'm Leonard Kaflesh, City Commissioner. And kind of a few years ago, going through the city ordinance, saw this board and it stuck out of why it didn't exist, what had happened, and we just kept bringing it up. So, really excited to see the possibilities that we can have with a relationship between an advisory board and the commission and focusing on some of the things to help the city. Kelly?
Whoa, here we go. I'm Kelly Pasture. Within the next few months, I've been with the city for thirty years. I have been involved in some of the economic development boards. It was not as formal as this one. I was involved when they recruited Cessna and we went through the countywide sales tax and all of that. And Jim Kelly and I spent some late nights in my office putting some proposals together and worked with the Chamber on that as well. And I'm really excited this group is getting back together.
I'm David Schwanker and I am the current City Clerk and City Treasurer.
All right. Well, thank you all for step, for applying and stepping up and being willing to serve on this advisory board. You all have, some of you have a tremendous amount of experience that we're gonna, that we are gonna call on because what, what I would like to see is that getting together of issues, what has worked in the past, identifying what our challenges are at this time and trying to, trying to jumpstart what we can do in this community to improve our town, to improve our downtown, to improve the community as a whole. What has worked in the past, some of you that were involved with Cessna, I know you were Chuck, and that was a successful run to get Cessna here. And I got in a little bit being, Don Hill was my boss, so I could, I could ask him a few questions from time to time about Cessna and how that process was initiated and what it took to bring Cessna here. So, y'all bring something different to the table. So, basically, we're gonna brainstorm today. We're gonna look at identifying what, what some of our most critical needs are and we're competing with other communities that have similar programs already intact. So, and each community has something different to offer. I'm a little more familiar with Chinute. I was born and, been born and lived in Chinute for several years and I understand some of the things they have to offer that we don't. We have things in the community to offer that they don't have. So, how, how do we market what we have, what we have to sell to everybody outside this community, not only in this region, but throughout the state and further? And then how do we go about marketing that message that here's what we have to offer, a quality of life, all these different things, all these amenities that we have, that this is a good fit. This is why, this is, this is why you're a good fit for this community, because this is what we have and this is what we can offer. And I would like to be forward-thinking, or for you to be forward-thinking on what you think we can offer as far as incentive-wise, what it's gonna take to bring more, more business, more opportunities into this community. So, we're just gonna basically brainstorm today and see how we're gonna approach this and be, let's think outside the box. Let's be innovative. Let's, let's look at what's been successful. Can we build on that? Can, is there something else we can add to that piece of the puzzle that's gonna, that's gonna bring everything up, bring the game up another notch? So, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to jumpstart this and present a competitive package and an image out there that people will say, I like what, I like what you've shown me. I have interest in visiting with you. I think we can bring something here and we can work together. And not only will that help attract new business and industry here, it'll also help the industries that we have here that are maintaining their workforce and adding to it. That's a selling point that they can say, here's why, here's why you need to transfer here. Here's why we're gonna transfer this line here and build this automotive part or whatever it is here, because we, we are a vibrant community. We have a lot to offer. So, let's, let's make sure that message is heard loud and clear and that we also back it up by, here's what we're gonna do for you. Here's what we're gonna offer. And then put it out there to where it's easy to find, it's easy to go to a website and see. So, that's, so I probably talked plenty already and I'll let you gentlemen jump in.
Well, the, the Economic Development Advisory Board and all, all the boards are under the City Commission and I see the opportunity that when we're looking at, at budgeting, to have the input from the advisory board as we look at budget. But first and foremost, I think your, your board has to get organized. The city ordinance says that there will be a chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary. And I think that you're, and then you'll need to establish a meeting date and time. The city ordinance specifies that it's a Tuesday at four, four P.M. and I forget if it's a fourth Tuesday, but I think that's what you need to determine among yourselves. You need to have an initial meeting that you can establish the organization, select a chairman, a vice chairman, a secretary, and then set a time that's gonna work for you guys. So, kind of let you be in contact with each other to set up an initial meeting date. The, and then we'll have to change the, the ordinance for the date that you select and the time. But when going through the, the ordinance, I don't know if you got copies from the packet, but it identifies the, the purpose. And I think, you know, before we, we go too far is we need to look at how we get our purpose established with development for recommendation to commission, the city economic development policies. Look at how, what those are, outline what areas, you know. You know, I could even see dividing like tasks. You've got big industry, medium, small. Then there's retail. We don't want to duplicate what the other agencies in town, what Chamber, Main Street, or MAC are doing. We want to add to and specifically tailor them to the use of, of our funds. So, you know, that's, you guys can, can look at developing these policies and preparation of an economic development strategic plan. There were, a few months back, Kelly, a facilitator was contacted. We had a pro, proposal to do an economic development plan. I'm not for sure if part of the down payment was paid. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah, and they've done part of it. I don't think we have, I don't know that we had the final. Lacey was actually the, the contact for them and she's not, she's out.
Okay, because that is this board's job. That is something the consultant will be working with you, developing that strategic plan. I had hoped that nothing had been done so that you could benefit, you could be part of developing the strategic plan for, for the city. So, we needed to, preparing policies for providing ad verum tax abatement too. That will be your task. Granting economic development assid, incentives is permitted by law. You know, hopefully you can develop that are unilateral to, to all people, you know, and that's where we gotta look at our, our funding source. We do have a economic development fund in our budget, but it's also economic development and transportation. So, we want to get the most mileage and how are some other options that we can do? What kind of money are we gonna really need? How are we going to use it to benefit the most? You know, whether there's some things that we could do, providing relief from utilities. It could be across the board to a lot of smaller industries as far as granting economic development money like you've done with Cessna, Standard Motors. Some of those have a different policy, but you know, there, there might be a way that with our special use sales tax restructuring when it comes up for election, maybe that scenario we could generate. So, we're not just using ad verum taxes to generate economic development money. But see, I think these are some of the things that I see your committee brainstorming and coming to the commission. And, you know, we need to develop a more active dialogue with, with your, with your board that we become unified, that we can see not just coming up with ideas, but getting them implemented. Establish guidelines for considering requests for those above and study then other economic development concerns and determine, as determined by, by you or the, or the commission. These are outlined as kind of your purpose in the, in the city ordinance. So, you know, I think it's, it's an excitement that we can see, not looking at how we've always done it in the past, but what can be done in the future. At the last League Conference, there was a, a class on economic development and the, the League, this is a two thousand and thirteen publication that the League has and it, it outlines all the tax programs and some other things. And I'd asked Kelly to go ahead and, and order these for each members and you got them for the other two commissioners too?
I was wondering, one copy, usually we get it electronically. If you want individual copies, because they're...
Let them, do you like electronic or paper?
Paper.
Or something like that, paper. Yeah. Let Kelly know if you want electronic or paper. I prefer paper, so. But I think it'll be a valuable tool to look at what the League has and give you direction and then it's one that, that we can all use to focus together. But in, in the committee, in, in the class, they started talking about some things and we had Roger Brooks when he was here. They started talking some ideas that, that he had, so maybe familiarize again with some of the, the comments that he had. And, and didn't Case State do another study? Yeah, so, you know, that's what they talked about is taking the first impression, imagining yourself that, coming into town. What's that first impression? And they kind of highlighted on that of, of, and with some of the things we've already started beautification, but they even talked about curb repairs, sidewalks, you know. And I started seeing things that we've seen downtown and around the, you know, some really important. So, I think those two studies, and then they also were talking about brands for the city. So, I think that's where the Chamber of Main Street can really start helping, give us some direction. But they did say set policies or business plan prior to a developer coming to town, identifying workforce, infrastructure, housing, schools, solicit business with strengths that you have. Here, boost companies that are there. Sometimes we focus on trying to bring somebody in and we forget how economic development can apply to existing companies. And they cited, one of the cities had two companies that were gonna relocate and they went back to them and started working with the companies. And by working with them, with economic development, they had them stay in town. It was gonna be a significant impact. So, you know, I think with economic development, we have a source that we can work to make sure that we're servicing our existing businesses and not overlooking their needs. But then it also talked about the tax abatement, IRBs, neighborhood revitalization districts, which we're in the process of updating. Those will expand some of our old areas, tax incentive financing, and other things, so. But they brought out, you know, looking at, at some tools and want to make sure that you're, you're trained, that whatever training that you need, that you come to the commission and let us know how we can, you know, we're only gonna be as good as the knowledge we have and training. So, if there's training that we can get, just like, like this source, if there, if you know of others, that we can come together to, to help your training, so you're, you're as effective as possible. Looking at development tools, looking at educating the public also. We want, you know, to have a visible economic advisory board. One, one of the things that Darrell Andrew always talked about was doing a plan and putting it on a shelf. So, you get it done and you never use it. And that's what with this advisory board, we don't want to create an advisory board that we've created that we're not working with, that it's not in the public, not before the public, that they can see what your, your direction and receive, you can receive input from the public too and, and develop a dialogue. Looking at how we can better target areas of the city for economic development. You know, I think maybe Kelly, economic development with the land use, comprehensive plan or the maps. So, you're familiar with the areas of town that are designated for the different classes. So, you know, Kelly would be a great source to get information to them and, and contact when you're looking at that and, and looking at enhancing our, our current assets, you know, so. As we, we start preparing the budget and we discussed last meeting with Lacey about looking in January to start getting input on the budget so we can start moving in a direction of planning and economic development funds would, would be a way that starting in January, we'd have a better grasp of what advisory board is looking at and what we can do and, you know, there's gonna be some things that we're gonna have to say, no, we can't do that now. But we want to, brainstorming is always a good word, that we just let everything come out and, you know, we can look and sort down of what's the best. Maybe something idea we have now won't work, but it might work five years or ten years, fifteen years down the road, so. But I don't know, I've dominated a lot of the conversation, but I'm really excited about the potential. Not that we're gonna compete with anything that is established, but I think we can add to. And that's why I see each of you having a talent and a desire that you can bring to the city and work together. We can share ideas and really make an effective committee, not, you know, and getting organized is the most important part, that you take time to get yourself organized, set your directions, you know. We, we started having special meetings to provide dialogue and, and that's why I see the advantage that we have is not having to deal with this on a commission meeting night, but we can get together and, and share without the time constraints of all the other business that's necessary. So, that's...
I, I would just add my thanks to everyone. I think the mayor has appointed a fantastic group and I'm very, very excited. I, I think these ten people are, are rock stars. I, I have about twenty-five contractors working at a building for me this week, all from out of town. I have about twenty-five contractors working at a building for me this week, all from out of town. And, um, from Michigan and Indiana and every one of them has come to me and said, God, this town is amazing, this town is so beautiful, you got so much going for you. And I really believe that and, but we need a group like this, you know, we need to aim high, I think, and, uh, I think this is a great group to do it. So I would just say thanks again to everyone for volunteering, I'm very, very excited.
And for all of you that, that, if you're not familiar, well, the commission has set up the third Wednesday of every month as a work session. So you have that opportunity, um, to come back and be a part of that, if you have some. Some information or you need some direction or whatever it is. It's, it's a standard meeting that we've set up to where we can do other business instead of doing it on a regular commission meeting night. And it's, it's always going to be at, generally it's going to be at nine o'clock in the morning like we started today. And it's, it's related to a specific topic or topics that we choose that we need to, that we need to work on. Or we need more time that we can't do during the regular, uh, commission meetings, so that's available for all you to keep that in mind, so. So, uh, like I said, don't, don't, uh, don't hesitate to say, hey, we need to come before you. And get us on your next Wednesday, the next month, next Wednesday's meeting and we're very accommodating, so. So I'm, I'm glad you're all here, I'm glad you're excited about serving on this and I'm really looking for some, some exciting, uh, things to happen. And the possibilities are endless, just be, be open-minded and, um. Even if something just sounds just like off the wall, some of the, some of the better suggestions that have ever come out have been something that a person didn't think. Had a chance or it was completely off the wall, but when you started thinking about it and dissecting it and getting into the heart of it, you're thinking. You know, it's crazy that sounds, that just might work, that just might be something that we can adapt and we can make work. And we can put some legs on it, we can run with it, so you all bring something different to the table and that's, that's the challenge is that. You each. Find that, that you're going to bring, be open, express your ideas, bounce off each other and collectively. You'll come up with some really innovative, exciting proposals, some direction that we can move forward to. Because like I said, the competition out there is fierce, but, uh, you know, I, I was, you know, I've lived in a few small Kansas towns, but they don't. They don't have the amenities that Independence has, I lived in Arkansas City, I, you know, I was, I lived in Chanute for a short time. I've been other places, they don't have the amenities that we have here. And that speaks volumes for the town, so, so let's make sure that everybody knows. Everybody knows that and let's build on what, what we've been successful, how can we improve that? And what direction that we need to go because the climate's changed from nineteen, from the early nineteen nineties when we were recruiting Cessna. Everything's changed, the economics have changed, the, everything, you can go down the list, so let's, let's be innovative. Think about what we can do and we're going to work with the budget and see what kind of funding resources we can make available. To make some of this work, because if you don't have a funding source, something that you have to offer, it's going to be hard to accomplish some of these things, so. We also have work that we need to do, but we're, we're counting on you to, to come up with a good program that we can promote. And that we can find you a funding source for, um, to carry out some of this, so that's the whole intent, so. Like I said, my, my background in economic development is about what I read and about like that, so that's why you're here. You're here to do that legwork because you have the expertise, you have the desire, the heart, and you want to do this, so. Once again, thank you very much for, for serving and looking for bigger and better things, so. I think Leonard pointed out about, um, getting together and setting up when you want to meet. I'm going to ask this, cause I'm, I'm a little unfamiliar with this, on your. When I've looked at other, other towns, um, Pittsburgh in particular. They had a, they had a set date and time that they were meeting, but then they've kind of amended it to where they would be. It was set up as needed, so they didn't necessarily meet every month. Because if they didn't have any business that they wanted to consider, then they just wouldn't be meeting just to have the fact that they had to have a meeting. So I, I don't know whether that's something that. Initially, they're going to be busy.
Um, the, in the ordinance that says the second Tuesday of the month, which the next one will be December tenth. At four o'clock, if they're available, I would suggest meeting then initially and, and get that started, the thing is having, uh, the set time like we do the. Planning commissions, the first Tuesday of the month, everybody can calendar that.
Right.
And if we don't have business like on the planning commission, if, then I'd let everybody know there's nothing, you know, there's no business on it, we won't have a meeting this month.
Okay.
But having it set up for a specific time might be helpful, just because they can get it all on their calendars.
Sure.
And, um, I will say they are subject to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Which means don't reply all on an email if I send it to you, cause then you're in violation and we get turned in, then you gotta take some schooling potentially. And, uh, at your first meeting, I will see if the city attorney is available and he will go over the Kansas Open Meetings Act, our ethics policy that relate to boards, things like that. Things you need to know, he was not available today, um, but I will see if he's available your first meeting, cause that's really important. All those, um, uh, different things that you talked about Leonard, um, I will make sure that I get those documents to them. I've already created a group that you all are part of, that I sent all the meeting, this initial meeting notice to, um. So, uh, if, if that date works, that's September tenth at four o'clock, that could be your first meeting, are you not, you're not available that day?
Might I suggest we take three minutes instead of meeting date while we're all here in present? Because that's really not a good date for me, or to say.
Okay.
Second Tuesday, we have a previous commitment and.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, uh, you could do that and then we'll, um, get that on the books and then see if we need to modify what's in the ordinance.
Okay.
Is, uh.
Tuesday actually works probably the best for me, is that an ongoing issue?
Can we do a third Tuesday?
Oh, any, any Tuesday.
The second Tuesday is the problem.
Is the second Tuesday?
The third Tuesday.
The third Tuesday.
Second and third for you.
Third Tuesday, so seventeenth?
Leadership and leadership like the. Yeah, so if it was the first or fourth, would be okay?
The first is the, uh, third. Now, we do have a planning commission meeting that night in this room at five thirty. And I know Tony's on the planning commission, so if it, if it was over by five thirty, he'd be okay, but he does have a commitment, I know.
Great idea to have a wall on the backside of it, so we can only meet for an hour and a half.
Okay, so if you want to do that, then, then we can host the meeting here and then Tony won't have to leave. That's the third, December third.
So four o'clock on the third?
Yeah, we can, we can have it in here and then that way we just go.
Can you do that?
Yes, I just, I have to be on the road no later than five, ten, cause I have a critical meeting and coffee will have to be in.
At what time?
Well, the ordinance said four, but you guys can make it a little earlier.
Yeah, you can make it.
So you're not pushing yourself so much if you want to. That's up to you.
Just say three and then we get out at five.
Yeah, you know, you know.
Three?
Three thirty. Okay, three thirty, December third, and I'll send you guys out a confirmation on that.
I just want to be transparent.
So is this, are we talking about a one-time change or changing the ordinance?
Well, you can discuss all that at that first meeting, determine what you want to do going forward.
So that'll be our first meeting that will determine the actual date of meetings at that first meeting.
Yes, you'll do all your organizational and have your orientation with Jeff as long as he's available.
Cause the board is subject to all Open Meetings Act, Open Records Act, everything, you know, quorum, two of you can. You, you can't join together with more than a quorum and discuss anything relating to economic advisory. Or it violates Kansas Open Meetings.
Yes.
So you, you are, now, that excludes ex officios, since you're non-voting, you know, they can be included in. In private conversations, but you can't exceed a quorum of the seven appointed members.
So that would be four, quorum would be four.
Yeah, that would be four, yeah, so.
And if you have like a, somebody that's not in a position, then that, you know, would modify that, it's whoever you have appointed that can take a vote.
Right, it'd be the seven members, ex officios would not be part of that.
If you had some vacancies, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, of the, the filled positions and the meeting has to be established, the place and the time. You can't, if you have a. A special meeting you want to schedule or change, it's got to be published and notified, it's, it's got, you know, transparency is all.
And that'll all go through Kelly.
Right.
Well, once you do the ordinance, once they set, once you set your meeting times, like the planning commission's the first Tuesday of the month, and once that's set. You change the ordinance and then we don't have to publish each meeting, it's just a set time, just like your regular meetings. Yeah, if you have a special meeting.
Says we need to get together and you take care of that, not the chairman or anyone else.
Oh, no, no, the staff will take care of notifying about meetings, providing information.
Meetings.
Yeah. Planning commissions are usually public hearings and they're published in the paper anyway, so we're kind of covered there.
Okay, so, so make sure I got this right, December third, which is Tuesday at three thirty, that'll be their first meeting.
In this room.
This room, Veterans Room, okay. All right, commissioners, any, anything else?
Just the, the board got any?
Do you have any?
Feedback, comments you want to give us?
Can you get copies of that stuff so we can have something to look at?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have this book yet, um, but when I get it, I'll get it to you, but then I've, um, you've already got the comprehensive plan, but I'll send that out to everybody, nineteen eighty-two comprehensive one. The planning commission's been trying to get that updated every year, they asked for it to be included in the budget, but it's pretty expensive.
We don't use exactly, or ten copies, you just make a copy for us, right?
Well, I have to check with the lead to see what they'll let me do.
It's usually.
So sometimes if they give me electronic copy, then we could use it for our organization, so I need to check with them.
Kelly, do you want to find out now who would like paper and who would like electronic or?
Um.
Or do you want to send an email?
I can make, if, if they'll let me, uh, make copies of the electronic, then I, we can make that, so that's not going to be a problem.
Okay.
I'll get you the Roger Brooks stuff that I have and Lisa, I need the Case Date Study, if you could send that to me. And if there's anything you can think of.
I can see you are full, um, the eighty advantage plan that we have done countywide, um, and that I would suggest that maybe everyone take a look at our website. Actioncouncil.com has a lot of information already out there, so it has all your demographic information, available buildings, what the buildings are being sold for, available sites. Um, different programs that are available, so it outlines your industrial revenue bonds, your, um, community improvement districts, all those programs that are probably in that book also. So it at least give you kind of a, a bit of a head start on looking through some of that.
So send me the link with the, um, with the study that I send out and do we have any, does that eighty advantage have like the retail leakage and that? Do we have a current one of those studies?
Um, yeah, it's all on our, those are on our website, the retail leakage.
Okay.
So we don't have a study, those are just regular S R reports that you can pull up, so and they're embedded on our website.
And any of the existing city policies or plans that we have, feel free to review them. Bring suggestions back to us to modify and update them, you know, we want those to be. Your input, your ideas, your reviews, it's been years since they've been gone over, but, you know. Kind of this committee has got a clean slate. And you guys specialize it for us and come back with recommendations.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for us, comments? Comments?
Till we all meet again, may come up a whole slew of questions for you guys.
Okay.
We have a Roger Brooks, uh, membership too and, and their, um, website that has a lot of resources. I'll set up, um, an, an email and, and password that you can all share, I've already set one up for the commissioners to use. But I'll set one up for this group too and you could go on there and it's, he's more, a lot more in the retail. Uh, realm as far as your downtown, keeping it vibrant, things you can do about.
And so gentlemen, is there a few years ago, we gave a presentation at the hall?
Right, you know, like, he says most retail happens after six o'clock, so when all your downtown shuts down at night, it kind of can affect your. You know, when people have time to shop, things, yeah, things like that, but he has a webinar series. And, and once the webinars are shown, then he puts them on his website and we have a membership to that, so I, and Lisa, I know you're already involved in that. And Havith, I think I've got you at it already, so I will, I will add a generic, um, user for you guys. So that you can get in there and, and check that out, cause that, that has a lot of good information as well.
Okay, if that's it, no further questions, then thank you, thank you for being here today and looking forward to, to. A lot of good things coming out of this, so thank you again for volunteering to come up and serve and, and have your input. And I'm excited to see what happens out of this, so, good luck to all of you and good luck to us, we can, we can find money here to. To make some of the, make programs, make some of this work, it all ties hand in hand together, so. And if you ever have any questions with, for Kelly or any of us. Feel free to drop us an email, call, whatever. We'll try to find you an answer or get you an answer if I don't have an answer, so. All right, thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, we're going to go ahead and, and restart the, the, the meeting at this time. We were, we're talking about, we have a meeting, uh, in December, third Wednesday, which is December the eighteenth, and that is a work session. And it's been brought to my attention that, um, we can set a facility tour of the nineteen sixteen city hall, there were some people that missed out. On the initial tour when we had it and they would like to be in attendance.
That, this would be the facility tours of all the, the city facilities for the commission and the commission elect. The, the one for the nineteen sixty city, sixteen city hall was rescheduled, um, to the ninth at eleven fifteen, but only one commissioner is going to participate that. So that's not going to be a special meeting, this would be the tours of all the different city facilities.
Okay, I got confused, I was thinking that this had gotten changed to the eighteenth.
No.
Okay, so, okay, so this one will be, um, something for, uh, the commissioners and for Dean. And that is for December the eighteenth and we've set it up for nine AM?
Nine AM works for us unless you want to start a little earlier.
Does nine AM work for?
Yeah, nine's.
Good, Dean, does nine AM on December the eighteenth, Wednesday, work for you also? Okay, so we are all in agreement that that works.
Okay, we will get that set up.
We will get that set up for December the eighteenth, nine AM, Wednesday, facility tour.
And then anybody that wants to go to the city hall public tour, it was rescheduled for the ninth at eleven fifteen.
Ninth at eleven fifteen.
And that will not be a commission meeting, cause we only have one commissioner participating, but anybody that wants to come and see what's been done is welcome to attend that.
So that's a Monday?
Yes.
Monday.
Yeah, Ian had a, a schedule conflict on the fourth, so they had to reschedule that.
Okay, all right. We had, uh, also on discussion, open items. Anyone?
No.
I didn't, I didn't have any, I thought they was all related to the, to topic A.
I just put that on there in case you had anything else you wanted to discuss, that gave you the latitude, since it's a special meeting agenda.
Okay, 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 no, I don't have anything, Gary, okay, so we'll, we'll move on. We've all had a chance to look at the reports, the board minutes and the electrical board, uh, we're moving on, we have an executive session scheduled. And it's, uh, a personal matters of non-elected personnel. personnel, and do you have that document here that I can read? Okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we, that we move, that we recess for an executive session for discussion of an employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319B1. And how much time are we looking at?
Thirty.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty, yeah, I'll start at thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, okay. And it is 10:30 now, so the meeting will resume at 11 o'clock. I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay. That'll include the commissioners, Dean. Okay, we've come out of executive session, and we need to go back in executive session for another 30 minutes, and it's 11 o'clock now, so we will come back in and resume at 11:30, so that's the motion that I make.
Second motion.
Every, any, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, it's 11:30, and we are back in session, and there is no action taken. And my favorite part of the meeting is adjournment, so I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Let everybody go.
He clears the room.
Why happened?
Shocker.